You ready with your script, Hope?
I'm ready.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the July 21, 2020, meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Before we call the roll, I'm going to ask Ms. White to read in the record the protocols for going forward here today.
Pursuant to Executive Order 20-69 issued by the Office of Governor Ron DeSantis on March 20, 2020, and Mayor Keith A. James's Executive Order Number 2020-05 issued on April 2, 2020, the City of West Palm Beach's boards and committees are conducting meetings through media technology and have released the requirements to have a quorum of its members physically present at City Hall. On April 14, 2020, Mayor Keith A. James issued Executive Order 2020-09, which specifically provides the rules of procedure for conducting city meetings, including requirements for quasi-judicial hearings. To ensure the ability for the public to continue to participate in this meeting, it is being streamed live and available for viewing in the City Commission chambers located at City Center for 01 Climatis Street on the condition that social distancing be practiced. Additionally, for those wishing to access the meeting remotely, they are able to do so directly through the applicable Zoom webinar link, as well as the city's usual media channels, including WPB, TV 18, the city's website, and the city's YouTube channel, Facebook and Twitter feeds. Anyone from the public who would like to provide comment on an agenda item is able to do so through the following. In the City Center, Flagler Gallery, dialing 561-320-6451, and leaving a voicemail not to exceed three minutes. Sending an email or video recording to pbpubliccomment@wpb.org, or completing the online public comment form at www.wpb.org-publiccomments. Those accessing the meeting directly through Zoom may also use the Q and A or raise hand features. Anyone accessing just the Zoom audio using their phone may raise their hand by pressing *9. Regardless of method, please be sure to indicate the agenda number or case number for which you are providing comment. Everyone providing testimony must have video capability and will need to be sworn in. The swearing in will occur at the start of each case on the agenda. If you are about to provide testimony and were not sworn in, please be sure to indicate such and be sworn in before offering your testimony. After the applicant presents their case, staff will provide a presentation, and then the public will have an opportunity to speak or have their comments read into the record from previously received correspondence. The board will then go into executive session. Prior to rendering the decision, the board will confirm no additional public comments have been received by staff. For the members of the board, it is emphasized that Florida's Sunshine laws are applicable, and you may not use the chat feature or any other form of individual communication to discuss matters with other board members, the applicant, or the general public during the meeting.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, we're going to call on you again and ask you to call the roll.
Stephen Mans.
Present.
Todd McLeod. Peter Piffco.
Present.
Deborah Raine.
Here.
Andres Peradello.
Here.
Mark Pateman.
Here.
Christopher Chase.
Here.
Scott Holt.
Here.
The next order of business is approval of the June 16, 2020 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Any corrections? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for approval. Have your second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is report of the planning staff.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Board members. Angela Van, planning his own and administrative. And I'm gonna try to share my screen. I pray it works. Let's see.
You can do this, Angela.
What is that?
The green button on the bottom.
Yeah, did. That's what came up.
And then you got to click the part of your screen you want to share.
Because I had issues with the thing. It was not coming up here.
Do you see it on your computer screen? Would you want to share? If you left-clicked that twice, I think it pops up. There you go, girl.
It's not open. Okay.
Is that what you wanted to share with us?
If you have too many windows in the lower right-hand corner, it says, "Open more windows."
It's still not going to let me do it?
Not should.
It should. It will.
It's not reading my flash drive. I just had it open. Oh, well.
Is that not that you have?
You have to open it before you share it.
There you go.
Hmm. Alrighty.
All right.
He said a... Well, that's the best I'm gonna get, huh?
I think try the bottom right corner. Will that do it? Will that thing do it or not? Nope, never mind. It's God's will.
I got this far. There you go.
There we go. Good enough.
These are planning board cases that's been heard since the June Planning Board meeting. First case. Commission meeting heard on the commission meeting of June 29, 2020, 5-0 approval of these cases. This one case was heard by the planning board on May 19, 2020. It was a dock located at 310 North Flagler Drive. The applicant has an existing dock and wanted to put a new dock at 156 feet, but the code owner requires 100, and commissioned it past this. Next case was by the City Commission on July 13. Also was a 5-0 vote, and planning board heard it at the April 21st meeting. This was a cervical located at 1601 Beverly Road. It was a major amendment to amend their sign program to allow additional signage on the office towers to Western East facade that face Beverly Road. And again, the commission did approve this, and it's also changed the name of the... It was Air Fork Industrial Park Plan Development to the actual cervical. But we called it for years, so it officially changed the name. And that concludes all that. City Commission only had two cases since your last planning board meeting. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, any questions of staff? Right? If not, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may. And I don't know if you were going to mention, but just so the board is aware that we just won a very big ruling the other day on the Okachobee Business District amendment that was approved in 2018. As you know, the city was challenged, as was on the fact that the OBD amendment was considered spot zoning, increasing density. Anyway, long story short, the city prevailed on every count. So we won that. It was a big victory, and again, that ratifies the OBD amendment that was approved back in 2018. So you may have seen the article, but I just wanted to share that with you.
Well, congratulations. Thank you for sharing.
Congratulations.
Next on the agenda are remarks of the chairperson, of which I have none. That brings us in the Declaration of Ex parte Communications. Does anyone have anything to disclose? Hearing none, we will now... Well, I guess we need to call the first case before we swear people in. On our agenda are continued cases. We have none, which should bring us to Planning Board Case Number 950. Why, 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 why?
Why, why, why?
We ask why.
Give me one minute. I'll bring in the applicants.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe that is everybody.
All right, thank you. And I remind the applicants that they are presently mute. If you wish to speak, you need to turn that on. At this point, I'm going to ask that we swear in. So with the people who are about to give testimony in this proceeding, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Yes. So, please proceed. We'll hear from the applicant.
All right. Hello. Share my screen. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Hello, good evening, Chair and Planning Board members. I'm Michelle Katera with Urban Design Studio here on behalf of City Place Retail LLC. We are here this evening requesting an amendment to update portions of the Rosemary Square City Place Master Sign Plan, which was last adopted by Resolution Number 36119. The portions being updated are very limited. It's only to Exhibit B, the Master Sign Plan, and the Administrative Waiver section, and Exhibit C, which is the tenant sign criteria for Rosemary Square. And there's clarifications in that. Staff is recommending approval of this request. We meet all eight of the Section 9432 major amendment standards. Before you, this is a summary of the Rosemary Square City Place CPD Master Sign Plan history. The City Commission adopted the original plan in 2000. These regulations were created to address a condition of the original DRI, which required an overall signage plan with every Level 3 site plan application. The current sign plan governs all signage within the areas bounded in red on the map. The sign plan has been amended many times over the last two decades, as you can see. The most recent amendment was adopted in just December of last year and established zones within the CPD where different signage standards apply and just general cleanups of the sign standards that have been tacked on over the many years. This amendment included new commercial tenant sign standards for the rebranded Rosemary Square and also reinstated and clarified the sign standards for other portions of the CPD. As previously mentioned, the amendment before you this evening is limited to portions of the sign plan that apply to only Rosemary Square, which is Zone 2 on the map, and commercial tenants within Zone 1, and are intended to clean up and clarify allowances that were not addressed in the last amendment that was before you at the end of 2019. The first proposal proposed is to Exhibit B of the Master Sign Plan. This contains the bulk regulations for all of the sign zones. Exhibit B includes a procedural section, which outlines thresholds which would allow administrative waiver to certain standards. The amendment before you this evening proposes to introduce three new waivers. The new waivers are necessary to address recent tenant signage requests that require greater design flexibility on a case-by-case basis that were not contemplated in the sign plan, again, when it was before you at the end of 2019. The proposed new waivers will follow the same process for individual review and approval per the current adopted Master Sign Plan. In other words, there's already the allowance for waivers. There's already thresholds in place. We are only asking for three new waivers or thresholds to be added to the list. Waiver 1, which is administrative review, which falls under purview of City Place Retail LLC. And the two new waiver requests, the first is acceptance of signage that contains a logo and acceptance of signage with more than three colors. And then under waiver 2, which requires a minor PD amendment for staff approval, is for a 25% to 50% increase in the allowable panel and letter height of sign type 1, which is a facia identity sign. The photos on the right-hand side of your screen are examples of how these new waivers might apply. The picture on the top is something we're all familiar with, Burger-Five, but this would be example of a logo added to a sign, which is not typically allowed under the current regulations. You would need to seek a waiver to have that logo. And then the sign on the bottom, which is a blade sign, a suspended blade sign, would be example of a sign that already has three colors, black being the letters, white and pink. If this tenant wanted to, for example, add a band of color around the outside of the blade or put a different colored text as the second line, that would require a waiver. The minor PD amendment threshold for the increase in allowable panel and letter height would be an example of, again, the Burger-Five sign. Currently, the regulations limit panel and letter height to 18 inches. And as an example, if the actual text of the Burger-Five sign is, say, 18 inches, but they wanted to add that panel below it, that would require a minor PD amendment. The other proposal is to Exhibit C of the sign plan. This exhibit contains the actual specific design criteria for all commercial tenant signs. These updates are strictly cleanups and clarifications that were discovered as the new standards adopted at the end of last year were put to play and also to tie into the new waiver thresholds that I just went over. On your screen, highlight specific updates to the design regulations, one of which is related to the new waiver to allow a sign with more than three colors. If you would like, I can continue through my final slides, which highlight each specific proposed edit in Exhibit C, or I could stop here, but I do want to highlight one item that was an oversight that we'd like to fix prior to City Commission, which has to do with the blade sign bracket. Chairman, would you like me to proceed through the rest of my?
I'll leave it to you as to how you'd like to go.
Okay, I'll just move through real quick.
Okay.
This again is just another example of Exhibit C, where there's a clouded text update. It has to do with stainless steel anchor bolts, again, just to clean up and a clarification. One of the other clarifications has to do with the arcade identity signs. The current sign plan has various mounting options for arcade identity signs, but they weren't clearly labeled, and there was a little bit of confusion as tenants were coming in for permits. You know, as far as where the bracket was, where the letters hung, it was a cleanup, clean up of explaining that. And then this is a cleanup to the blade signs. Specifically to the photo example is of a blade sign that does have a bracket that's mounted to the panel, to the building. There have been tenants that requested or planned to request a blade sign that might be mounted directly to the wall with no bracket. So these changes allow that. And then the additional cleanup that was an oversight that... Yes, there is. That we would like to address prior to City Commission, if the board would approve it, is we failed to clean up this one section that's highlighted, where we want to omit the wording from a metal bracket in that one point. Again, just to tie into what we already asked for, is to allow for the panel mounted directly to the wall. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, any questions of the applicant? If you could stop your screen share for a moment, then we can. We'll see everyone better. Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you so much. Mr. Snyder, let's hear from you. Oh, you have to unmute.
For the record, Eric Snyder, Principal Planner. My PowerPoint pretty much mirrors what the applicant did. Staff has no objections. I mean, it's kind of embarrassing that we went through this thing, Michelle and I, with a fine-toothed comb, before we brought it before you guys last time, and we still missed some things that didn't come apparent until permits came in. So hopefully, everything has been picked up, and we're not going to be back in front of you guys in six months. Nobody wants to do that.
Any questions of staff?
Staff recommends approval. It meets all the conditions.
And just to be clear, Eric, this is so if one of these minor issues come, you could handle it administratively. It won't have to come before us, is that part of it?
That is correct. We picked up... You guys may have started noticing some of the signs coming down. The signs are getting... The new sign replacements are starting to come through, and I've got probably 30 permits for different signs to replace all the businesses that are in there within the Rosemary Square. And as we started going through that, we started realizing that some of the stuff hadn't been clarified within the code. And there's a couple of things that we picked up, and this is what this amendment is to correct.
I know many of the board will be disappointed. They wanted the opportunity to hear evidence and make rulings on a bracket for a sign, but we believe that you could handle. Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, please.
What about electronic signs?
The city does not permit electronic signs, except for the case of the Cravis Center, the Convention Center. Regional attractors are the only places that electronic signs are permitted.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just out of curiosity. I... Oh, go ahead. Just out of curiosity, are those new businesses or are those replacement signs for existing businesses?
The only one that I've seen for a new business is Casper, which is the mattress store that's going to be coming in. We've seen the build-out for that. The rest of the signs so far have been replacements. I, off the top of my head, do not believe that I have actually approved a sign for a new business, but there are new businesses that I have done interior build-out permits for. As an example, Urban Outfitters is going in where the old Bruisee space was. There is a... There's a couple of other businesses going in. The representatives for Rosemary Square are on the call if they want to share some of the other businesses. I just can't think of exactly.
I'm just curious. I'm just curious too about another thing. As far as like television monitors in windows, hanging from windows, is that allowed? Or is that part of this sign?
There's this current iteration of the sign code does not have that. There is a section for an LED display, like a... It's a freestanding, kind of what you see inside of malls, a kiosk that has... It's electronic. I believe they're putting in two of those, one of them up near the city. The bank, it's a coffee shop, Capital One. And then I believe there's going to be another one closer to the fountain across from Cheesecake. I don't have the full sign plan in front of me to know exactly where that other one was going to go.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Chris, you wanted...
I have a question. So my question is, the impression I get from the presentation is that you're basically trying to maintain things the way they are and that you found a couple of little adjustments to accomplish that objective. And I guess the alternatives would either be to be laxing your standards because they seem too severe or trying to tighten your standards to get things under control. Am I getting the proper impression? Are you just basically trying to keep things the way they are?
Well, Related hired a sign consultant a couple... When they started to go for the rebranding of Rosemary Square to look at their sign program. And that's, if you look in that Exhibit C, and you can see there's the company that put that together is their logo, or their name is on the bottom. And then that was generated in conjunction with Related, and then they brought it before the city for the sign amendment that Michelle mentioned that went through at the end of last year. We had thought we picked up a lot of different things. Many of the requirements were the same, as example, the sizes. A lot of those waivers that are in there had been the same. There had been some minor things that the consultant had recommended, the three-color item. They had recommended the three colors on a sign that had never been there before. And then we realized through the process of reviewing permits that, hey, maybe they do need to have that waiver flexibility. If Related looks at it and says, "Hey, this isn't a bad thing," they can authorize the four colors, the five colors. Currently, we had at least two permits came in that had four colors. I had to say, look at it, looked at the sign requirements and said, "No, you cannot have that." And there was no method that Related could say, "Hey, wait a minute. This is something we looked at. This is the tenant's identity. They have four colors." Whatever situation it may have been, to change that. So that's what the waiver things are picking up on this one. I think those are the largest things. The other stuff, you know, is the blade sign mounted to the wall or not, did come out of some of the tenants wanting to do that. This is all stuff that was written by Related and their consultants, and when staff looked at it and we agreed with their original sign plan, they had some things they realized they hadn't thought through because no signs were... Permits were submitted with the actual framework for how to design. So it's... This is really a cleanup of some things to make it easier for signs that conform to the code. It does open a few more things. Signs that conform to the code, um, and it does open a few more things that conform to the their sign plan. Uh, in some instances, that sign plan, the the sign criteria are more stringent than the general cities sign criteria. And in some areas, they're a little more flexible, uh, this is as a plan development allowed, they wrote their own sign code and and as Michelle pointed out on one of her initial slides. This has been the uh, sign code has been in place for since two thousand twenty, uh, no, excuse me. Um, to the year two thousand and it's been amended, I think, six times now for various things that we came up with, including um. Steven's favorite Brio, huge Brio sign. So anyway, but but in all seriousness, this is going to make it easier, um, and it does allow Related to have the control of as the master. Developer and the master, you know, City Place Retail LLC, who's the management uh to be able to uh. Have the signs look the way they want them to look, um, and then we we verify that um. So that they can move forward.
Any other questions of staff? And if not, do we have anyone from the public who wishes to be heard? On this application?
Chair, any uh, any comments from the public?
Okay, in which case we'll bring him back to the board, does anyone have any concerns about this application?
No, I think it's a very good idea.
You know, for myself, for myself, I think, I think Rosemary Square has. You know, it's beautifully done and um, you know, it's, I would, I would. Be inclined to give them more flexibility because I think they've used their their um judgment so well. And made it really a beautiful place and they keep adding to it and keep beautifying it too. So um, I have a lot of confidence in in the way they're running it. And I for one am not anxious to have hearings on things like signs for us, unless it's necessary. All right, any other, any other comments from any of the board members? And if not, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman.
We, also, do we need to add that language, Michelle, do we need to add the that small additional language you wanted us? That's, or or is that required?
Um, Eric, do you want to address that, I believe, yes?
Yeah, probably uh say as amend with the added um corrections as shown in the presentation. And I'll take care of that, we're working with Michelle for going to city permission.
Okay, I'll move approval with the corrections and amendments uh presented at the meeting.
Thank you, have we a second?
Also, I have.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposes, passes unanimously, thank you. All right, we will now move to planning board case number eight three seven A, eight three, is it eighteen three seven or eight three seven, forgive me? Someone have the number handy? Well, I may have it. When I get the number correct.
Eighteen three seven.
Thank you, eighteen thirty seven A, eighteen thirty seven B, and eighteen thirty seven C.
Here, just wait one minute, I'll bring everybody in from the applicant side. Couple more. And that should be everybody.
All right, for the new people who have joined us, you please raise your right hand. You swear from the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Do.
Thank you. All right, let us hear from the applicant. Mr. Oyer, are you going to begin?
Yes, sir, I will, good evening, uh, Mr. Chair and Board Members, I'm going to ask for Linda Louis' help in. Uh, pulling up our presentation. There we go, and Linda, are you also able to advance the slides for us?
You shook your head, yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, um, okay. There we go, can you guys see the PowerPoint?
We can.
Okay, great. Ready when you're ready.
Okay, yeah, if you want to start the slideshow, so we have a full screen version.
Um, I thought I have it on slideshow.
Right, I think if you go to the top to slideshow in the middle and pull down.
Yeah, Linda, like you would do a normal slideshow, just go from the beginning.
I thought I hit that button, so.
There you go. I think you have it perfect now, Linda.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Hi, good evening, uh, Harvey Oyer on behalf of the property owner. And uh, we do have on the line the owner of the property as well as the entire professional team. Land planner, landscape architect, um, traffic engineer, civil engineer, so any questions that you might have. Uh, we should be able to answer, so this is a three-part request, it's all the same project, it's an exciting project. Uh, Linda's put up the location map, this is the southeast corner of the intersection of I ninety five and forty fifth street. Next slide, please. Uh, if you recall what used to be here, it's a little more than an eleven and a half acre site. It had an IHOP and a Days Inn, and for those of you with a longer memory. You'll remember it also had a Knights Inn there as well that came down a few years ago. Uh, and it does have a freestanding multi-column billboard. Uh, the very south end of the property along I ninety five, that will remain. Uh, the very northern end of the property uh has already been approved for a Wawa that is under construction. So what you will hear tonight is a comp plan amendment, a rezoning to CPD. And the uh site plan approval for the CPD, which will include the Wawa, so we are pulling in. An already approved commercial project into the CPD and then adding a hotel and a multifamily uh project. Next slide, please. So our request is a large-scale future land use map amendment. To change the flu designation of the subject property from commercial to commercial east. And to remind the board members what that is, that is a comp plan designation that the city permits east of I ninety five. That allows the the full range of commercial uses, but also allows residential uses. A good example of it is the Time Equities Project that's under construction just south of Rich's Ice Cream. Uh, your board approved it a few years ago, uh, it too was a a a redesignation from. Commercial to commercial east, uh, that's a nearly completed project that I think all of us uh believe is a a great addition to the neighborhood, so. Uh, that is the flu change that we're seeking so that we can add the multifamily residential to an otherwise commercial district. Uh, the second request is a rezoning uh from general commercial to commercial plan development. And that is what allows us all of the flexibility and custom zoning, so to speak. Uh, to give uh the developer and the community a a better project. Uh, as part of that CPD, there are four waivers, two of which pertain to signage. One of which pertains to a loading space and the final one to a setback waiver, I will go into all of those in more detail later. And finally, something that I don't think would normally come before you, but because we're in front of you, we're going to. Share it with you anyway, and that is a minor subdivision replat, uh, because we're breaking. Uh, Lot Two into two separate development parcels. I think that normally would only go through staff into city commission, uh, next slide, please. Uh, so the request involves uh rezoning the entire eleven point six two acres, which includes uh the Wawa parcel. Uh, which is previously approved for sixty one hundred square foot Wawa, which, as I said, is already under construction. A proposed one hundred and fifty room hotel with an eleven hundred and sixty square foot restaurant incorporated into it. Three hundred and seventy four dwelling unit apartment project and to retain the existing billboard at the south end of the property. Next image, please. So this is an aerial view looking south from forty fifth street, so you're looking. Due south down I ninety five, you have the C seventeen canal on the left, which is the east. This still shows the IHOP and the Days Inn, uh, it's not a current photo, we have current photos later in the presentation. The site has since been scraped, uh, all of the trees that uh the city wanted saved have been saved. Some in place, most of them to be relocated on site. Next slide, please. So these are some prior site conditions, again, they no longer exist because within the last several months, the site has been scraped. But it was uh an abandoned hotel and an abandoned IHOP, next slide, please. The existing or prior condition was not a good one, uh, one that uh functionally obsolete buildings. Uh, past their lifetime, needed to be redeveloped, next slide, please. This is the site in its current condition with the land development work and the land clearing having occurred for the Wawa construction. Next slide, please. And this is the rendering of the proposed project that you're going to examine tonight, so. Uh, this is looking to the southwest from the C seventeen canal. The Wawa parcel is outside of the view of this rendering, it would be off to the right. So you're looking at the hundred and fifty room hotel and behind it, the three hundred and seventy four unit apartment building. Uh, both of which are eight stories in height, next slide, please. Now, this is looking from the back of the hotel towards the multifamily to the south, and what it's illustrating. Is a a public plaza in between. Uh, the public plaza serves the hotel guests, the restaurant guests, uh, in the hotel restaurant. As well as the tenants of the multifamily and and the public as well, so this is completely publicly accessible, not gated off. It's part of the horizontal integration of multiple uses that is a requirement for CPD. So to remind you, in a CPD and commercial east, uh, you need multiple uses on the site and they need to be integrated. In this case horizontally integrated rather than vertically integrated, next slide, please. Uh, this is the front of the uh residential, again, eight stories, three hundred and seventy four units. Served by a six-story parking garage, we'll look at the details in a moment, uh, it's tentatively named Riverstone. Next slide, please. This is looking down the east side of the multifamily project. Between it and the C seventeen canal, which is a very wide canal. And uh, a river walk will be created that will have a walkway uh down the side of the building to the back of it. Where there are o- other features, including uh a tot park, a dog park. And a dry retention area that will be greatly enhanced with cypress trees, so it looks more like a. Preserve than a dry retention, but its functional use is a dry retention, next slide, please. So this gets to the first request, which is a flu map amendment, it is currently uh commercial. Again, we're east of ninety five, we'd like to take advantage of the commercial, commercial east designation, which allows us to put in the residential. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the level of service analysis that is required with any flu amendment. Uh, the relevant part are the green checks off to the right, that there's sufficient capacity for all of the services. I'll call your attention to the traffic portion in the bottom. Uh, these are mitigation strategies that we've agreed to with the city. Uh, to uh mitigate uh future traffic in the area. Uh, one, uh, the top one, which I think is very significant. Is the commercial east designation allows an FAR of one point five, we've agreed. Through a condition of approval to limit it to point six, which reduces the potential non-residential FAR. Uh, from being seven hundred and fifty nine thousand square feet to three hundred and three thousand square feet. So we have voluntarily agreed to not develop four hundred and fifty thousand square feet of non-residential use on the site. Uh, to help the future traffic situation as well as what your board typically sees with projects these days. Uh, bicycle storage, uh, electric bike, micro mobility sharing areas, bike sharing areas, reserved carpool and van pool spaces. Uh, we have agreed to contribute to a forty fifth street corridor study that is yet to come. Ride sharing for the hotel use, the hotel will have a shuttle service, electric vehicle parking. Spaces, these are all things that I think your board typically sees with new development projects and and we've agreed to those as well. Next slide, please. The rezoning, as I said, is from general commercial, which is its present zoning, to a CPD, which is what will allow. Uh, the site plan that we're going to present to you this evening. Next slide, please. This gives uh your board a good breakdown of the various uses and how they are horizontally integrated. So starting up on forty fifth street, which would be to the north, which is the right side of your screen. Is the sixty one hundred square foot Wawa that is already approved and under construction, but would be part of this CPD. Uh, it would stand alone on its own parcel, which it currently is platted as a separate parcel. Currently, everything to the south of that is one parcel, we're proposing to break that into two parcels, one pad for the hotel. Uh, the other for everything else, that's where the uh, the replat comes in at the end of this presentation. You can see where the hotel is located, the restaurant is in the uh southeast corner of the hotel. It is open to both hotel guests and the general public. Uh, the, to the south of that is a large uh open area, this includes the public plaza that we. Viewed a rendering of a moment ago, as well as a traffic circle under a port cachet overhang for the drop off. Uh, and ballet into the multifamily. Uh, the multifamily, as you can see, is eight stories in height with a six-story parking garage to the west that faces I ninety five. To the south of that is the dry retention area that I said would be an enhanced dry retention with a lot of planting in it. To the south of that is a preserve area that uh that cannot be built in and sandwiched in between the dry retention and the preserve area. Uh, that shaded gray is the existing billboard, which will stay in place. You'll notice uh a very faint green line that connects from the center of the Wawa parcel. Into the center of the hotel parcel, goes through the hotel parcel, through the plaza and wraps around that. Riverwalk that we saw a rendering of a few moments ago, that is part of the pedestrian interconnectivity, so there is both. Uh, vehicular and pedestrian uh interconnectivity. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is uh probably a prettier version of what I just told you because it's colored in. I'll give you a moment to absorb that, you can see there's a little pocket plaza at the connection between Wawa and the hotel. Uh, you can see an eight-story hotel with a pool and other amenities. Outdoor dining area, the plaza amphitheater, the roundabout. Uh, that's, that area is sort of the glue that connects the hotel to the multifamily. You can see very heavy planting uh between the C seventeen canal and the multifamily. That includes uh, I think about forty three trees that are already on site that are either being. Preserved in situ or being relocated and saved on the site, many of them are sable palms, next slide, please. And I failed to mention in the last slide, but hopefully you saw it, where the tot lot and the dog park are on the south side of the multifamily building. The project mitigated benefits and additional integration, some of this I've already covered, including the traffic. The outdoor seating area for the restaurant, a large public open air plaza, landscaping above the code requirements. Uh, which I did not cover, uh, interspersed seating under trellises along the sidewalks. And the river walk along the waterfront for residents and patrons of the hotel, next slide, please. So this is the Wawa. So this is the Wawa site plan. I only put it in here as a point of reference. Again, that's not something that you're voting on tonight, but it is the access point out to 45th Street. So all three of these uses will be sharing the same access point onto 45th Street. Next slide, please. This is the hotel site plan in a little bit more detail. It's supported by a hotel study that not surprisingly says hotel rooms are needed in this area. Not surprising because we have one of the largest hospitals in the county. St. Mary's just down the street from this. This is the site of two prior hotels that were functionally obsolete, but there is a demand for hotel rooms in this area. Next slide, please. And this is the multifamily site. Again, a market feasibility study that was performed. Similar situation, proximity to I-95, proximity to jobs in the area, the easy access up to Palm Beach Gardens, which is more expensive community to live in, but a lot of jobs there. Same thing situated between Riviera, Palm Beach Gardens on the north, and West Palm Beach to the south. Sort of an ideal location for this. Next slide, please. We are seeking four different waivers. This image is to simply show you where they are. I'm going to go into more detail, one by one, but let me just give you the highlights here. On your far right is off-premises signage. Oops, did we lose our screen?
It looked like Peter, you hit something. Is that possible? Did I see it say? Did you pull up your inadvertently Peter your? I think it's up here. It's suggesting it's from your packet. If you have it, end screen share for you, Peter. If you see it on your screen, should've been the bottom.
I can stop.
Okay, there we go. All right, and now we can resume where you were.
Can we, Linda, are we able to get back to where we were?
I think it was around slide 19, if I'm not mistaken.
It was the four waivers.
For a moment.
Peter, was that your way of saying you didn't like our architecture when you cut us off?
His other pictures he could have shared, Harvey. You should be grateful he was showing his strength.
Okay, so the four waivers, I'll just give you the highlight of it. The off-premises signage, the code requires the signage for your business to be on your property. And obviously, a sign on the hotel parcel and the multifamily parcel doesn't work because they're not on the road. So we are seeking a multi-tenant sign on 45th Street that will have the signage on one single monument sign for all three uses. The second one, which is at the bottom of your screen, is the sign for the multifamily use. It is supposed to be within the first 100 feet of the property boundary. If we did that, it would be in the middle of the drive access road. Moreover, it would be interfering with this public plaza feel that we're trying to create, and it wouldn't place the sign near the building that it's associated with. So we want to put it closer to the building that it is associated with, and aesthetically, it works better as well. But to accomplish that, we need a 41-foot waiver from you. The loading space variance is a commercial building of this size requires two loading bays that are 10 by 50. We don't need them. There will be no 18-wheelers coming here. Everything that services the hotel is a box truck. So we only need one loading space, and it doesn't need to be 50 feet. It can be 25 feet. So we're minimizing that because it's not necessary and would not look good or be a good use of the land. And the final one is the setback reduction against I-95, and that's because legally, I-95 is the front setback of the multifamily. And it would require a 44-foot setback because of the eight-story building. Of course, that's a bit of an artifice because our real front door is 45th Street. So this becomes a side setback. So we're seeking a waiver from 44 feet down to 21.6. Next slide, please.
Excuse me, Harvey, are you receiving the full screen of your PowerPoint?
I am not. I still see the other slides off to the side, but it works for me. But if you want to make it full screen, that probably makes it a little easier to view. I think if you go to the left to from beginning or from current slide would be better.
Linda, I think you're sharing the wrong window.
Oh, okay. There we go.
There, perfect. Okay, now, next slide, please. So this is the signage waiver. The one up on 45th Street, as I said, is going to be a single monument sign for the entire 11 and a half acres. All three businesses will utilize the same sign. That's the only way we can get signage up on 45th Street. That's pretty self-explanatory. The second one, I hope I described well. If we put it, the sign for the multifamily product within the first 100 feet of the property line, it would be in the middle of that drive aisle. And if we put it any earlier in the roundabout, it would mask the beauty of the landscaping and lighting of the roundabout. And it also, I think, would continue to be confusing which building it's announcing. So it is pushed to the back of the roundabout feature close to the building that it is providing signage for. Next slide, please. This is the loading space. Again, I think that's pretty straightforward. This board and the city commission have not historically required more loading than is needed. It's a waste of land use and it's aesthetically not pleasing and not needed in this case. So that's a reduction, not an increase. Next slide, please. And the final one is created by this oddity that I-95 is actually considered the front setback, but for all intents and purposes, it's a side setback. Another side note to this is I think the 44 feet is required by the eight-story building, but the eight-story building is not in the setback area. It's a six-story garage. But the six-story garage, which I think would otherwise meet the setback requirement for a six-story building, is attached to the eight-story building. So staff considers that all one building. I think if we were able to consider them two buildings, it wouldn't require a waiver. But in any event, in abundance of caution, we're seeking the waiver anyway. Next slide, please. So we are using a shared parking analysis. The next slide will be more illustrative, but I think for this slide's purposes, we've highlighted the peak demand. And the relevant part to you, I believe, is going to be at the very bottom, where if you peak out the demand for parking in every one of the uses of the hotel and the various room type in the multifamily, you would need 836 spaces, and we're providing 839. So we're in an excess space situation, not a deficiency. Next slide, please. This will better illustrate where the sharing occurs. So to put it simply, the hotel parcel on its own is underparked. The multifamily parcel on its own is overparked. And because they are horizontally integrated, we are going to utilize the multifamily excess parking to share it with the hotel. It, again, exceeds the shared parking maximum peak usage by three spaces. So we don't think there will be any issues. But the way it would work is when the hotel parking lot fills up, the hotel patrons, if they need more parking, spill into the multifamily on the ground. It doesn't really look like you're entering a separate parking lot because it's glued together by this public plaza and landscaping feature, as well as pedestrian walkways. So it feels like it's all the same project for the person parking a car at the hotel. It's only legally, we're putting a separate parcel line between the hotel and the multifamily so that our client can sell it off separately in the future, should they desire. But from a ground-level user perspective, they're not going to know the difference. They won't know that they've essentially left the hotel parking lot. Next slide, please. And this is the minor subdivision. Right now, there is Lot 1, which is the Wawa parcel, and Lot 2, which is everything else. We are proposing a replat, which we meet the technical requirements for, and that is the red line illustrated through Lot 2 that will create a Pod 2 and a Pod 3. Sorry for the confusing terminology of lots and pods, but I think you can follow that. And again, that is for the purpose of separately financing and possibly selling off the hotel parcel, which would be financed separately from the multifamily and possibly in the future with separate ownership. Next slide, please. Economic benefits to the city are tremendous because right now, it's a vacant parcel. And even before that, it was, you know, an unused parcel with functionally obsolete buildings. The hotel is expected to have annual revenue. This is using the average daily rate multiplied by the 150 rooms, multiplied by the county's average occupancy that would generate annual revenue of about $8 million. And if you apply the 6% bed tax and 7% sales tax to that, that's just over $1 million in local tax generation. Right now, that parcel has no taxable value assigned to it. All of the taxable value is assigned to the apartment site. At buildout, it will generate about $100,000 a year in real estate taxes just to the city. So that's 0 to 100,000. The apartments are presently assessed at 38,000, the apartment site, that is, and that would jump to about $570,000 at our estimated assessed value. So the total real estate tax increase just to the city is approximately $670,000 recurring, as well as all the initial building permit fees, engineering fees, and then the recurring sales and bed taxes. For art and public places, we have an estimated construction cost of $85 million. So the estimated contribution to art and public places is $750,000. Job creation estimate, construction, approximately 400, and permanent jobs, about 50, to operate the hotel and manage the multifamily. We had an economic impact study performed by Larry Zabik, who's on the line with us. The direct economic impact is approximately $100 million. That's the $85 million in construction cost plus all the soft costs and an indirect and induced economic impact, which is the multiplier of that money circulating throughout the community of $250 million. So obviously, a significant fiscal impact to the city, which, if you read the newspaper yesterday, the city is headed towards fiscal problems in the coming two budget years, at least, due to the pandemic situation that we find ourselves in. So this will be a welcome financial addition to the city, should the city commission approve it. Next slide, please. So we have to comply with these two comprehensive plan elements. We believe we comply with them. Staff agrees. I'm happy to go in more detail with you, if you would like, but in the interest of time, I'm going to ask to go to the next slide, which are the rezoning standards found in Section 94-32A of the code. Similar story, we believe we meet all of them. Staff agrees. I'm happy to come back and go through any of them individually with you, should you like to, in the interest of time. We'll keep moving. Next slide, please. And these are the general design standards for a subdivision that we believe we meet. And staff, again, I don't want to speak for them, but the staff report reflects that we comply with these as well. Next slide, please. So your staff is recommending approval of the request subject to the following three conditions of approval, all of which the applicant agrees with. And that is the voluntary limitation of the non-residential intensity. The FAR would normally allow us an FAR of 1.5. We're voluntarily capping that at 0.6, which takes approximately 450,000 square feet of future commercial development off the table and retires it. The second condition of approval is we adhere to the conditions outlined in the TPS letter from the county dated June 8. We agree to that as well. And finally, that all the private development projects here are subject to the art in public places requirement found in the city code, which, of course, we agree to as well. Next slide. So the applicant respectfully requests approval of the future land use amendment, the rezoning, the general design standards with the uses that we have proposed, the four waivers we have requested. Again, we have staff recommendation for approval, which the applicant agrees to. And I failed to mention earlier in the slideshow that the hotel use under the normal code would be permitted with extra requirements. However, when it's a CPD, that allows the city commission to approve any type of use without going through the PXR requirements. So we're calling that to your attention and asking that you make that part of your recommendation. Should you approve the flu amendment, the multifamily is allowed by right. That doesn't have any extra requirements. And the Wawa was already approved as a Class B by the zoning board of appeals. But I just wanted to call that to your attention, that normally, the Wawa would need ZBA approval. It already has it. Normally, a hotel would be a PXR, which is permitted with extra requirements. Of course, there were two hotels there previously, and we meet all those additional requirements. But just for clarity of record, I'd like it to go to the city commission with an understanding that the city commission would be exercising their authority under a CPD to allow any use that's permissible in the code. Next slide, please. And we have on the call with us Greg Horton, the CEO of the property owner, who's joining us on a line from California, Larry Zabik, who has been the construction manager on the project, Beatrice Hernandez from MSA Architects, no stranger to you. She's done a number of great projects in our community. She's the architect of record. Brandon Almer is the civil engineer from Thomas Engineering. Brian Cheggis from iPlan and Design is the landscape architect. And Jeffrey Leiter is the surveyor, who can address replating issues. And Sean McKenzie is our traffic engineer. So you have the full complement of professionals. Next slide, please. And I'll leave you with the rendering that we started with, which I think best illustrates the proposed buildings. And we stand ready for questions, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your and your board's patience during our presentation.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? And if you could temporarily end the share screen so we could see each other as we have the discussion.
Thank you, Linda.
Do you want me to start?
Yes, go ahead, Peter, if you have a question.
All right. Location and type of the artwork, has that been determined?
I'm going to let Larry Zabik perhaps weigh in on that because I don't, or the client, I'm not sure whether those decisions have been made.
Okay. No, we have not. We have not done the coordination with the art and public places coordinator yet. We will be doing that, however.
Okay, um, being a rental building, can you talk a little bit about? How the children are going to go to the school buses and, because I'm really concerned. About children walking from the building all the way to Forty-Fifth Street. Uh, plus the fact that there's no shelter for them.
I'm, I'm going to let one of the professionals tackle that. I don't know whether, uh, Linda wants to weigh in or. Uh, whether Beatrice wants to.
Um, certainly, um, okay, so there was some coordination with the, um, Palm Beach County School District. Um, according to their approval letter, they, um, said that the project will generate a total of twelve students. Um, in asking whether or not a school shelter was needed. Um, are the response from the school district had stated that, um, there is just not enough students to generate the need. For a school shelter or school bus shelter.
How many units in the apartment building?
There's three hundred and seventy-four proposed.
And there's only twelve children?
Yes.
I find that hard to believe, but anyways. I love the, uh, the dog spa that you have at the back. Are you giving away dogs with every unit?
No, but we are, we are providing, uh, some fenced in, uh, areas for the down, the bottom floor rooms. That, uh, will probably be popular for dog owners and, uh, we, we like the idea of giving the dogs a bath after they've been out. Uh, in the playground area that they, that will be fenced off for them and, and that way we can perhaps keep our apartment cleaner.
Wonderful. Um, can you talk a little bit more about the amphitheater? And I, uh, my concern is the noise that's predicted or projected. When you're in between two buildings, you have a hotel and then you have the apartment building. So, uh, how is the noise going to be controlled if there is music, for example?
Right, you know, the, uh, the amphitheater is for public gatherings as well as gatherings for the, for the, uh, tenants of, of the, uh, project and so forth. But it's not for late night events and so forth. We might have a one man van out there on a Saturday afternoon or. Whatever the case may be, that kind of thing, um, maybe some music piped in electronically for other times, uh, you know, for people to sit and eat their lunch and. Uh, employees from Wawa and the hotel and the apartment and the tenants and, uh, hotel guests could, uh, have a place to go outside on, on nice days and. Eat their lunch out there and, and, uh, you know, have a good scenic view.
Okay, my final statement is, um, I'd like to register my objection, uh, to the disappearing IHOPs.
I do have jurisdiction, Peter, on that.
You should say that because we considered putting in one of these new, uh, that it's called Lift. It's an IHOP, um, fast. Food kind of, uh, uh, franchise. We considered it, but, um, right now we have restaurant space and we're not sure at this point what will fill in that space. For the, mainly for the hotel and, uh, obviously for the tenants in the apartment complex.
Okay, uh, my final question is signage for the hotel. So have been addressed at all? On the building, building signage?
Yeah, the building signage will be, uh, primarily up on the, on the, the top of the tower above the in front entrance of the. The apartment and the same for the hotel. So, uh, obviously we want, uh, you know, once there's a flag chosen for the hotel. We'll have to conform to, to, to their signage requirements for the flag as, as all hotels do. Uh, and we'll have to come in and, and get that approved and so forth, but right now the design is such that we put the, the hotel name and the flag. Uh, logo up above, uh, on the center tower.
So there's no waiver requirements at this time?
No, not at this time.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant?
Uh, I.
Todd, go ahead.
Yes, on the, um, traffic issue, I saw that there was, uh, maybe it was in your presentation or the staff report, some traffic mitigation. Strategies or the, they're not specifically, I guess, part of our. Approval tonight. Is that something you work out with the city's traffic engineers later?
Sean on, maybe he can address that better than I can.
Yeah, this is Sean McKenzie here. Can, uh, you all see me and hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, uh, in particular, yeah, the, the traffic issues really related to the long range planning aspect of the project. Uh, the fact that the site had the potential to build, um, at build out over seven hundred thousand square feet and what will Forty-Fifth Street ultimately look like in the future? So we sat down with the city's traffic engineer and mutually developed a set of mitigation strategies to. Align this project with what the city wants to ultimately see happen along Forty-Fifth Street and in the city in general. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, um, the second part of the question, the TPS letter from the county. Includes construction of several turn lanes and signalization improvements. Uh, it says something about it has to be part of the municipal development order. So I, as that's, once again, that's not a specific, uh, condition of approval recommended by the staff, I guess. My question is, is that included in the proposed documents here? All those improvements that the county is requiring?
Maybe I can address that, Todd, the TPS letter is one of our conditions of approval. So whatever the TPS letter calls for, um, by reference and integration becomes. A condition of our approval. I'm not sure if that's what you were asking.
Yeah, that's perfect. That, that was my question. Thank you.
All right, other questions of the applicant? Scott, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I was just wondering though, in looking at the traffic, um, analysis that was attached to the, uh, applicant, to the, in the background materials. Uh, there is mention of Forty-Fifth Street widening. What is the, could someone just clarify, what is the timeframe for the proposed or, or conceived of widening of Forty-Fifth Street relative to the build out on this project?
Yeah, this is Sean McKenzie again, and there's two sort of separate projects on the time horizon. Here, or maybe three. Um, we've already got the turn lanes and signalization improvements under construction right now at the project entrance. So that's, that's improvement number one. Improvement number two. The Florida Department of Transportation, uh, is doing a significant interchange upgrade at, uh, Forty-Fifth Street. And I ninety-five, and that is likely going to happen. It's just, uh, just within their five or six range time horizon. So we're probably looking at twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six on that. Um, and then in the long range transportation plan, um, there's a proposed eight laning improvement of Forty-Fifth Street just from I ninety-five. Over to Congress Avenue. And so the time horizon for that is sometime, you know, prior to twenty or twenty forty or twenty forty-five. Um, the, the specific timing of that has not been identified or funded at this time.
But because, and I'm, I'm asking primarily because the, the main traffic concern that I, uh, have with this particular location just is in relation to the fact that you have got. Uh, two emergency rooms and two medical centers, uh, that are further west on, uh, on Forty-Fifth Street. You have JFK North, you know, basically right there. And then of course, Saint Mary's, um, farther down the street. But, so I'm encouraged to hear that, uh, there is this, that this is on the time horizon. And, and overall, though, I think as someone who travels this corridor every day, um, traveling, you know, from my house, I live, uh, in the north end of the city. And I use Forty-Fifth Street frequently to get to ninety-five. Um, I think this is a great activation of that particular parcel and will hopefully help spur increased. Development along with the, the stuff that's going on in the JFK medical offices. So I congratulate you on that.
Thank you. All right, any other questions of the applicant? All right, thank you, in which case we'll turn to staff.
You need to, uh, unmute yourself first.
Are you looking to share your screen?
Yes, I am just looking for my PowerPoint presentation. Um. Uh, here we go. New share.
That looks similar to what we saw before, right?
John? I am trying a new share and it does not seem to be working. Do I need to close out of this one first?
Am I, am I the culprit again? No, not this time.
Yeah, close, close, close out Linda and then open up your other PowerPoint before you share.
Okay.
Or if it's on the network, I can get it.
Okay, hang on a moment. I think I, I have it.
That's it, that's it.
Okay, great. Yay, hallelujah. Okay, okay, um, okay. Good evening, Linda Luis, Senior Planner for the Record. Uh, just a couple of things I want to add to the presentation. The first is the interlo, interjurisdictional review. So the proposed development project has received traffic concurrency approval. As evidenced by the issuance of the TPS letter from the Palm Beach County Traffic Division on June eighth. Um, as noted, um, you know, the TPS approval is conditioned. And that will require the applicant to implement mitigation measures in order to maintain roadway level of service. Uh, the school district had also issued school concurrency approval for the project on April seventeenth. Um, as noted in the approval letter, um, the impacts of the proposed project is negligible to the Palm Beach County school system. And staff had also sent out the I Park notice on July tenth. And today, um, staff has not received any objection from any of the local jurisdictions within the county. The I Park is the Intergovernmental Plans Amendment Review Committee. And, um, it is the county's clearinghouse, uh, tasked with, um. Um, providing feedback for any proposed comprehensive plan amendment. Um, the second thing that I wanted to touch upon was the public notice requirement. Uh, staff as well as the applicant has met the minimum, uh, notification requirements of the zoning and land development regulations. To notify the public of the proposed application. Um, the notification requirements include signposting on the property, mailers to all property owners within five hundred feet. And an ad published in the Palm Beach Post for tonight's planning board meeting. And to date, staff has not received any, um, inquiries or any objections to the proposed development project. Um, in summary, staff is recommending approval of all three petitions primarily because it complies with the Florida statutes. The comprehensive plan as well as the city's zoning and land development regulations. Um, staff also believes that the applicant has provided substantial evidence that, uh, supports the future land use amendment as well as the rezoning. And the site design is consistent with the zoning code requirements with exception to the waivers. Uh, staff does not object to supporting the four waivers as they've been justified by the applicant. And they're also important to the integration of the overall design, which is the requirement of the CE land use. Um. These are the conditions of approval, uh, and they're applied to the land use amendments as well as the rezoning. Uh, as noted in staff's report, uh, these conditions are tied to the traffic impacts associated with the project. And the mitigation measures that are necessary to maintain level of service, um, in, in the area for traffic. And that includes staff's presentation.
All right, and Linda, if you could please for the moment end your screen share so we can see that as we discuss. Any questions of staff? All right, if no questions of staff, would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application?
Chair, there are no comments from the public.
All right, thank you. In which case we're bringing to the board. Anyone have any thoughts or comments? Does anyone have an objection to the proposed request?
You know, Stephen, I don't have an objection. I'm, I'm just so happy to see that that corner is finally going to be developed. It's been, uh, abandoned for a while. Uh, it's been an eyesore until they raise the buildings. I do have a concern that there's only going to be twelve students who, who show up for this property. I, I just, I, that is just impossible to believe. And, uh, I just think they need some type of, um, shelter there for bus pickup, school buses.
I, I, I think they do, you know, market studies and they may know how many are. You know, maybe single or how many may be older or whatever else, and that's what they come by with. We can add something to it though, perhaps. To recommend it be revisited if the assumptions turn out not to be correct and there are more children there. Maybe there's something you can do. Go ahead, Mr. Green.
Chair, Mr. Chair, Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, but that number of twelve came from the school board themselves, right?
That is correct. So that number did come from the school district.
That number is no ours.
Yeah, so Rick, when they come up with a number, what things do they look at? Cause a lot of us who are not schooled in this, as you guys are, we see all these units. How can there be so few children?
Well, just keep in mind.
I can't explain.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Linda.
This is a rental community and according to the market study for the residential development. That they, um, project that most renters will come from the, um, that will be young professionals coming from. Um, you know, employment in the area, um, JFK Medical as well as, uh, Corporate Park. So they are, um, catering to the young professionals. So ideally, um, the renters will be single, um, young professionals.
Okay. But your points, I think, shared by, your concern, Deborah, is shared by some others. Any other comments or thoughts before we bring it to a vote? Any other concerns people have? Is there general consensus that we support this?
Sure.
Amongst our board? All right, um, I'm going to ask for guidance both from Sam and from you, Harvey. Sam first, I think we need to do these in separate motions. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And if you would do the waivers first, I think that would be the better practice.
Okay, and Harvey, I just want to double check with you. You had asked us to be certain when we vote on these things to include certain things or not include things as we. As we formulate our, our motions, I would welcome your input on that to be sure we cover all the bases. So, Mr. Thomas, you say we, the first motion then should be ones addressing the waivers?
Yes, sir.
Be eighteen, eighteen thirty-seven B.
Okay, I'll look for a motion then.
So move, Mr. Chairman, um, I move approval of eighteen thirty-seven B. Which is rezoning to change the zoning of the subject property from general commercial to commercial plan development, CPD. And includes the four waivers, uh, from the zoning and land development, uh, regulations.
And before we, uh, go for a second, Mr. Oyer, have we covered in this motion any issues?
Well, it's really to staff's, uh, satisfaction. So if the staff is satisfied that it doesn't need to be mentioned, we're fine with it. But Linda, I think you wanted it to be clear that the, the uses proposed are being recommended to the city commission. As allowable uses.
That is correct. So that it will be written into the adopting ordinance, which needs to get approval by the city commission.
You accept that amendment to your motion, Peter?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, have we a second?
Mr. For your, quick second, um, Sam, is this a land use change also? When the land use go first?
Uh, yes.
The land users need to go first.
Before they do the rezoning?
Yes.
The land use first, I'm sorry, the land use should go first before you do the rezoning.
Now you tell us, Angela.
All right, I'll move eighteen thirty-seven A, uh, future land use map amendment to change the FLU designation. Uh, of the subject property from commercial C to commercial East.
Okay, is it before we go on, uh. Then did we have it correct? Is there anything else we need to add for this particular motion to cover all the concerns you had? Or might make sure we get this right the first time. That's my question. Mr. Oyer, have you any thoughts or comments as the proposed motion?
No, I don't think there's anything to add to the.
Okay, we have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those of favor signify by saying aye, aye, and the opposed passes unanimously. All right, now we have the second motion, one you made before, Peter. Can you remember it all?
Uh, I move approval of case number eighteen thirty-seven B. Uh, rezoning to change the zoning of the subject property from general commercial GC to commercial plan development. CPD and inclusive of the four waivers from the zoning and land development regulations.
And the recommendation?
And the three staff conditions.
Okay, Linda, have we covered everything? It was just said before. There was a dissent before.
Mr. Chair, also, the recommendation of the uses being allowable uses.
Okay.
With any additional conditions.
Okay. Is that your complete motion then, Peter?
Yes, it is.
Okay, have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next motion.
Third one, move approval of case number 1837C, which is a minor subdivision replat, to split a lot two within the Parkway 45 redevelopment plot into two separate parcels.
And Linda and Harvey, was there anything else you're recommending we include in this motion?
No, sir.
Okay. We have a motion, have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Does that cover everything, or do we have any additional motions? We have everything covered then. All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Good night, thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
We're almost done here. Next on our agenda are code revision cases, of which there are none. That brings us then to other business, unfinished business, new business. Does anyone have anything to add?
There's something I don't.
So, Mr. Green, real quick, what court was the one that made the ruling for you? Was that an administrative proceeding? Was it in Circuit Court?
I believe it was Circuit Court. The, we had the administrative hearing, gosh, that was a couple of weeks ago, a couple of years ago, that was with Judge Fokes. I can send you the...
I would, I would enjoy seeing that, thank you. And then, then off of the Court of Appeal, right, sir?
We'll see, we'll see.
I move the motion that the staff get a bonus for this.
Oh. We'll come out, we'll take it out of our joint pay, what do you say?
Don't come to bury Peter's taxes, please.
We'll devote a certain percentage. All right, if there's anything else, if not, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.